The legal voters of the town of Rutland, Vermont are hereby warned and notified to meet remotely via Zoom conference on Monday, March 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM to discuss Articles 1 through 22. To close the business, the meeting shall recess to 7:00 AM Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, at the Town Hall in Center Rutland for voters living on the west side of Route 7 and the elementary school on Post Road, for voters on the east side of Route 7 to vote by Australian ballot on Articles 1 through 22 inclusive. Those will close at 7:00 PM on March 2nd, 2021. And I will quickly go through these items, won't read them word for word. Please, folks, my computers are able to open them, but we'll summarize them for those on the phone. Article 1 is shall the voters authorize the select board to approve $1,065,342 for the general fund budget. Article 2 is $345,966 toward the operation of the police fund budget. Number 3, $872,803 for the highway fund. Number 4, $214,370 for the fire fund budget. Number 5 is $128,321 for the recreation fund budget. Number 6, now we're getting into the nonprofit valid items for the first several, I'll ask folks to hold their questions slide, the select board is presented. Number 6, $500 for the neighbor works of Western Vermont. Carrie, check number 6, that still says 2020. Number 7, $535 towards supporting the work of the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Number 8, $670 towards supporting the work of the retired senior volunteer service or R S V P. Number 9 is $1,000 towards supporting the work of A R C for year 2021. And number 10 is $1,500 towards supporting the work of Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging for the elderly citizens of Rutland town. I will pause there for a moment if anyone has question or a comment on one of those items.
Matt, this is Mary Ashcroft. Matt?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can now, yes, thank you. So the select board has prepared presentations for article items 1 through 5. Would this be an appropriate time to present?
Well, I was going to just run through these other items quickly and then I was going to turn it over to you.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, not seeing anything on those items. I will continue moving on. Number 11 is $3,000 towards supporting the work of the Child First Advocacy Center. Number 12 is $3,500 for partial funding for the Marble Valley Regional Transit District or the bus. Number 13, $4,054 to the Chamber in Economic Development of Rutland Region, along with other businesses and municipalities for the ultimate goal of growing the economy in our region. Number 14, $4,500 for the support of One Free Kids Museum. Number 15, $4,502 towards supporting the work of Rutland Mental Health. Number 16 is $6,000 for the Rutland Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice. Actually, it's a little more complicated than that, I guess, $6,500 towards supporting the work of Rutland Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice. Five, I'm not sure I understand this, $500 Rutland Area Hospice and 6,000 Badna Home and Community Health Services. Turn that as you want. Number 17, shall the voters authorize the select board to raise $15,000 for scholarships to be awarded to worthy 2021 high school graduates of the town of Rutland who have resided in the town at least two years and wish to attend institutions of higher learning. Number 18, $16,216 for the Regional Indulgence Service. Number 19, $95,964 for the Rutland Free Library Association. Number 20, actually, I'll pause there. Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? Yes, Marsha?
Yes, sorry, it's me again. For the, yeah, I know.
No apology necessary.
For the Rutland Library, do we have, is there, I don't know if there's anybody speaking to them. I was just curious though if there was, what the increase was from last year, but if no one's here to speak for them, I don't think anyone from the town would actually have that information, but I was just asking.
Yeah, there isn't anyone on the list that jumps out at me, but is there anybody here who would like to speak on behalf of the library? Not seeing any.
That's fine, thank you.
Any questions or comments on any of those other nonprofit valid items? Seeing none, move on. Item number 20, shall the town of Rutland establish a reserve fund pursuant to 24 VSA Section 2804 to be maintained and used as a depreciation account for the purchase, repair, and or maintenance of the transfer station, building slash equipment, with this depreciation account to be funded annually by taxes raised at the rate of .00125 per $100 of assessed property valuation. Item number 22 is to elect various officers of the town. And item number 22, transact any other necessary legal proper business. So with that, Mary, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Matt. And thank all of you who are attending tonight. I'm glad to see a good turnout for this virtual meeting. I'd like to introduce my fellow select board members. John Paul Fagnant is here and he is also our second constable and our health officer. John Paul has done a lot of work this year as a health officer, keeping on top of the science of the COVID pandemic and what the town's response should be in so many circumstances. Sharon Russell is a select board member. Joe Donardo, select board member and fire marshal. And joining us, a new select board member, Aaron Jones. You will recall that Josh Taranzini has been our previous select board member and chair of our select board. Josh was elected to the Senate, the Vermont Senate, and so he resigned his seat. Aaron took his seat and is filling it until the town meeting election, when presumably he will be running and so will others. So we'll look forward to that contest on Town Meeting Day. We have a few things to report briefly. Our audit is completed. Every year, the town hires the A M P I H auditing firm. Once again, we have received an unqualified, in other words, a clean opinion that we are doing things right. So enormous thanks go to our new town clerk, Carrie Clark, and Susan McGee, who are our town clerk treasurer and assistant town clerk treasurer. This has been a difficult year for, on many fronts, but the state of our town is strong. Our revenues, we have been watching very carefully in two respects, and we said this when we sent out the tax bills. We let the voters know that we would be watching revenues. So our property tax payments, the first installment that came in September 10th, 97% of our property taxes were paid for that installment. And the installment that was recently due in January, January 10th, were up to 94% of those taxes coming in. And there are late taxes, there are late payments which will be added to that. So I commend the taxpayers of the town of Rutland for staying on top of the taxes and for continuing to support our town and school budgets. So thank you very much. The 1% tax that we have for supporting other programs in town, our budgets, we were concerned about. Rooms and meals taxes took a hit because of the COVID pandemic, but surprisingly perhaps, sales taxes increased quite substantially. So what we are finding in our 1% revenues with two quarters already reported is that we are above the projections that we budgeted for that 1% tax. We're also pleased to report that our town employees are at work, they're in good health, and we're very grateful to all of them for all of the work that they have done and all of the adjustments that they have made through this pandemic time. So let me preface my remarks. I'm going to report on the general budget and then various select board members will report on other pieces of the budget. But some things to keep in mind. First of all, I mentioned the anticipated revenues, they are coming in as projected, so we're feeling comfortable now with that. We will continue, of course, to monitor that. The proposed budget that you have in front of you has a 3% pay increase for the employees of the town of Rutland, excluding the select board. I don't think we changed our pay at all. And the overall budget increase, if you add up all of the town side, the general fund, police, highway, fire, and rec fund, and you add them all together, the overall budget increase is 0.43%. So I think the board has done a very credible job of presenting a budget that addresses the needs of our town and the citizens who live here, but also does not stress what is a difficult circumstance financially for many of our townspeople. All right, so I'm going to ask Bill, do we have the general budget to put up?
Two.
Okay. All right, and for those of you who, we do have the budget sheets on the website. And I would commend you to take a look through those and you can scroll along. You're going to scroll for me, Bill, right?
Yes, I will.
Okay. A special thanks to Bill Sweet, who is our town administrative assistant to the select board, who worked with Carrie Clark and Susan McGee to put all of these numbers together. And I'm sitting in the select board room now and there are papers all over all of the tables because your town report is getting ready to go to print. And this is the last part of what we do before it does. All right, the general fund budget. This is $1,065,342. And a couple of items that I do want to mention on this. This is a different format this year than what you have seen in the past because we have started with income. If you see any nonprofit corporations' budget sheet, income has always started, but the town has never really done that. So this year, we wanted to show you where the money comes from. So if you scroll down to the bottom of the anticipated income here, including the local option tax, which as I said, is coming in strong, our total anticipated income is $1,266, $266,950. So that's pretty much the same from year to year. And that helps fund the general fund and other, a little piece of the police fund, I believe, too. All right, budgeted expenses, we'll start scrolling through those. The things that go up are things such as social security and pay for the town clerk, the Lister's Town Treasurer. Again, this is because we have budgeted for a 3% increase for our employees. If you go on the next page, you will see that our Board of Civil Authority and ballot clerks, we have budgeted less because last year, we had three elections. This year, hopefully, we will only have one, so less is budgeted there. Our health officer, we've budgeted less for, that's John Paul Fagnant. But you will see later that we have bumped up the second constable, police and fire, which is also John Paul Fagnant. J P is helping to cover more work on the road, patrols for our police department. We are down an officer who resigned from the police force, so J P is helping to fill the gap. And he's very good at stopping people who are speeding, so please do be very careful out there. So further down, down under the transfer station, the one expense there I wanted to point out, and this is budget line 035194, is there is an increase in the hazardous waste cost. And there's also an increase, if you go down a little further, in food scraps pickup because now the state of Vermont is requiring that the transfer station have a place where people can deposit their food scraps and we send it off to recycling to be composted. So those are a couple of expenses that have gone up. Bill, if we can go on to the next page. All right. These relate to the town hall and the offices that are here. We have budgeted slightly more for $40,000 for town hall maintenance. If you, when you were able to come in, the town offices, you will see that we have finished renovations in the town clerk's office. The Lister's office has new furniture. We have repainted and installed a new drinking fountain in the main hallway. And now we need to turn our attention to other parts, possibly downstairs, but certainly out front of the town office and other things that need to be addressed. So that's why we've budgeted $40,000, which is up from 28 last year. Municipal retirement is up. And just under that is a stormwater item, which has increased from last year's budget, which was $30,000, up to $45,000. The state has imposed some fairly significant requirements on the town to address stormwater runoff from our public spaces, particularly our roads, and to take mitigation efforts for water that is not as clean as it should be and is passing into the waters of the state. The reason, though, it went up to $40,000, $45,000 is if we have transferred the stormwater budget from the highway department over to the general fund where we felt it would be more appropriate. So if you look at the highway budget, you will see a zero amount entered there and that $10,000 was transferred over and additional $5,000 put in there. We have also a couple of items after that. Put in $1,500 for the town hall cemetery maintenance. State law requires that we put a fence around our cemetery, we have not done so, and we need to do that. Okay, so now on to the last page of the general budget. Okay. The significant, the second item there is the county tax, which has increased from what we budgeted last year at $72,000, and now we're budgeting $80,000. This is a budget that is approved by the assistant judges and it is intended to cover the expenses of the courthouse building and the sheriff's department. We have really no control over this budget, it is a pass through, but we must collect the taxes and so it's listed here as an expense. One other item, and that would be under seniors, it used to be called Cheney Hill Seniors, and now it's just seniors. You will notice that there is no money in the proposed budget. This is not because we're being mean to seniors, many of whom are sitting on your select board, but because I spoke with Jim Hall, who kept close track of the seniors' budget, he's the treasurer. And there is enough money due to COVID and the lack of activities that could be planned. There is enough money in the checking account for the seniors to operate for the next fiscal year without needing an infusion from the town at this point. So we didn't budget anything for them. So you will see the total budgeted expenses are $1,065,342. And because we have income, which includes the 1% tax and other income, we actually have a negative item shown here. But as of the expenses, we are increasing the general fund expenses by 3.35%. I do want to address, slightly out of order, but with the permission of the moderator, there is a ballot item, it is item number 20, which asks the voters to set up a reserve fund to start gathering money for the purchase, repair, or maintenance of the transfer station, building, and equipment. We're asking for .00125, which, on per hundred of assessed valuation, which we estimate will raise just over $11,000 a year. Just this year, we had to replace one of the bins that compacted garbage is put into. And we know that given the age of the facility, there will probably be other things that we have to replace or fix. And the purpose of this fund is to allow us to do that. We have similar funds for recreation, for fire, for police. And now we wanted to put this one in place with the voter's permission. So that concludes my remarks on the general budget. And the police budget, I believe John Paul Fagnant is now going to report.
So good evening. There's not much to show on the police budget from last year. If you look down through the line items, they're pretty much consistent. The overall increase of less than 3% is due primarily to increased insurance costs. So if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer, but the budget's almost the same as it was last year.
Okay, I did, Mr. Moderator, I don't know whether I'm supposed to answer questions or whether you wish to direct them to me.
Well, there is a question in the chat, do you want to field that one?
Sure. The question is about election supplies and why when we had, let me see if I can find it, why when we had three elections last year and only one this year, we are budgeting a fairly high amount of money for election supplies? Last year, we budgeted $7,000. This year, we budgeted $6,000, so it is a slight decrease. I think we were thinking that we were probably going to be mailing quite a few more ballots than we did last year, or not last year, but the year before. So some decrease, but in fact, the select board discussed whether we should have the town clerk mail out ballots to everyone, and we decided that that wasn't practical. But we are aware that quite a number more people will be requesting town meeting ballots by mail, and we expect that the $6,000 will cover that. I hope that answers that question. Next for the...
Mary, I'm sorry, there's part two to the question is that the town clerk and treasurer's salary, is that something we've scrolled past here in the general budget?
Okay, so the town clerk and treasurer's salary is, reflects basically the 3% increase that all other town employees are receiving. And that would be compared to, remember that last year, you can't look at last year's actual expense because we had a vacancy for a brief time in the town clerk and treasurer's office. And then we had Carrie Clark come in as our new town clerk and treasurer. So we actually ended up spending less, considerably less than was budgeted because of that vacancy savings. But we spoke with the town clerk and treasurer and we set her salary not at where the previous town clerk and treasurer was earning, but a slightly lower number. And what you see in the proposed budget gives Carrie now the 3% increase that other employees in town are receiving.
And we have raised hand from Marsha Turner. Marsha?
Yes, I have two questions, actually. One question, Mary, it has to do with the reserve fund. Does that mean that you set up this reserve fund and then does the select board have complete control of how that money is distributed in regards to the transfer station? Or does that go to ballot and vote to the voters about, you know, we need $20,000 for, you know, to do this to the transfer station? That's my first question.
Okay, do you want me to take that first?
Yeah, because the other one is about the police, so I...
Okay, all right, well, let me address the depreciation fund we want to set up for the transfer station. Will allow the select board to do just that. It will allow us, when there is a need for repairs or a piece of new equipment, it will allow us to vote in our select board meeting to authorize the expenditure out of that account without the need to go back to the voters because the voters are giving us the authority to set up the fund.
Perfect, thank you. And then for the police budget, I noticed there was a K-9 program. And I was just wondering if John Paul could maybe give a short synopsis of what that's about? Thanks.
Sure. So the town had an opportunity to look at a K-9, which would be a very useful tool for our small department. Those plans started off with a small allocation in the budget and Deputy Chief Washburn has been working to supplement those monies with donations from some of the businesses and folks around town who might benefit from having a dog on staff, if you will. But those efforts are on hold for now until we see what kind of grants and other resources are available.
All right, thank you so much, J B.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, next for the highway budget, we'll hear from Joe Donardo.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Good evening, everyone. We're starting off with a new format. It shows income to the highway and the anticipated income from state aid is $110,000, pretty similar to normal years. Page one, as you scroll down through page one, you'll notice that Byron and myself and Mary, Byron set this budget up, reviewed it with Mary and I on the Highway Committee, and there are very few increases, some decreases in different portions of the budget. I'd like to draw your attention to culvert replacement, item 45028. And we are asking for $70,000 in that line item for the replacement of a severely deteriorating culvert on the Gleason Road. Byron is currently going to be putting that out to bid on the approval of his budget and will need to get that replaced. This is a... and we'll need to get that replaced. This is a large culvert and quite long, so that's what that increase is. Everything else, pretty much, there's a few decreases on the one-ton truck. We are currently looking to replace that truck, so we'll just keep it up to snuff. And the idea will be that we will be operating a new truck next year. Should be mostly covered under warranty, so just some normal items, fuel, oil changes, stuff like that. So we're being able to decrease there. Pretty much on page one, everything else is about the same. Page two, we start off with the seven-yard truck. Again, everything looks about the same. And then we get into the items, starting with social security, that we have absolutely no control over. These are just things that travel with the current state of the economy. Insurances are always, seem to be going up. You rarely see that go down. But otherwise, everything is pretty good. The sidewalk grant will be used up out of the current, we hope this year, and we've budgeted a smaller amount for next year. The highway book is just getting all our town and roads into a book, so we know who owns what and where they are. And as Mary talked about in the beginning with the general fund, you will see that the stormwater line item has been eliminated. And we're going to try to put those funds into one place and make it easier to manage. Stormwater is a town-wide issue, so we felt it would be better in the general fund. This leaves us with a, let me see here, it says total budgeted expenses are $982,803. And less the anticipated $110,000 state aid would be a net general budget of $872,803, which translates to a 3.28% decrease. And either myself or Byron, if he's on, will be able to answer any questions the best we can. Thank you.
And we have a question from Marsha.
Yeah, the one-ton truck, Joe, how, the seven-yard one is the one that's the newest one, right? We got that a couple of years ago, maybe? I was just curious how old that truck was.
The smaller truck will be, I believe, six or seven years that the town has used that. And we have found that it is best to replace those about that time. The environment they live in, winter maintenance is really tough on themselves in that environment. And things start really going bad after about six years. So it's been pretty much a general standard that you run these trucks about that long and then send them down the road and get a different one. Because once you start getting into corrosion, repair, and that kind of stuff, your maintenance will far outweigh your useful value of the truck.
So you're saying that the town's thinking about replacing that truck. What, is it, are we turning in the one-ton truck, like selling it? Or a turn-in, like a trade-in, that's what the word is, a trade-in? Or are we keeping the truck?
We haven't quite got that far. We did approve tonight at our regular board meeting that Byron look into the cost and take advantage of the state bid process, which usually results in a very cost-effective way to purchase a truck. The state puts stuff out to bid, and municipalities are allowed to do that. In the past, I do believe, and if I'm wrong here, but in the past, I do believe that when we retire a vehicle, we do put them out to bid and allow folks to bid on them, usually with a minimum bid. So when the new truck is here and the money, or that truck is set up and ready to go, we will probably put that truck out to bid and allow folks to bid on it. If the garage or the dealership that sells us the new truck offers us a substantial money on it, then we may trade it in. It'll all depend on where we can get the best deal.
All right. Thank you so much, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Two other things, Marsha. This truck replacement was, is in our five-year plan to do. Each of the departments have a five-year plan, and we're on time to replace it. And also, the truck is out of warranty, so we wanted to make sure that we moved along with its replacement. Okay, next...
Mary, the other thing we want to mention, the other thing I'd like to mention about the truck is that money that will purchase that truck does come out of the highway depreciation fund. And that's what these funds are set up for, is that instead of having to borrow money and pay interest on money, we set aside a little money every year, so when these expenses come, there is no additional cost in taxes to the taxpayer because the money is there. And that money is earning interest rather than costing interest. So that's a whole nuts and bolts of a depreciation fund.
Good. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Okay, next, we'll hear from Erin Jones with the fire budget.
Thanks, Mary. So the fire budget is down 1.26% for the year. So it's a slight reallocation of funds, but there isn't anything that's gone up substantially that would raise the budget as a whole. If you go down through the items, one of the largest increases, I spoke with Chris Clark earlier today, his office supplies, he said that the copier and fax machine is really dated in their office. So it's upgrading it to what the town offices currently has for that machine. The SCBA maintenance has gone up $3,000. That's more of a broader maintenance for equipment that they have. It isn't just exclusive to the SCBA maintenance. The only other thing that, you know, really was notable that went down was the fire prevention education. And that was that they already had the materials that they needed for that, but unfortunately weren't able to do a presentation this year, so they'll still have those for next year. So the total budget expense for 2021 to 2022 is $214,370.
Okay. Thank you, Erin.
We have a question from Marsha.
Yep, again, sorry. Any plans on McKinley, the fire station on McKinley? I think I asked this last year at town meeting and pre-town meeting. You know, we revamped the center up in one, and I was just curious if there's been talk at all about the McKinley one? And maybe what the status is.
Yeah, I know that that is on our committee meeting agenda. So it's just a matter of getting that meeting scheduled and identifying a path forward for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're saving the best for last. Sharon Russell will report on the rec budget.
Maybe.
Is Sharon still on mute, or did she go to sleep?
She's on mute. She's also on the phone, so I'm not sure how that's working, actually. I'll ask her to unmute, but I don't think that's going to help. Anybody want to improvise?
Yes, I, well, we'll start with the easy part, which is the rec budget is down by 0.23%. Again, we have shown anticipated revenues at the beginning of the budget of $30,000. We're aware that it may not be that much this year due to limitations on the number of people who may be able to use the pool. Last year, you will recall that we had folks who wanted to come swim, make appointments, and have a time slot to do so. So we had fewer people using the pool, but I think we were able to accommodate folks really pretty well. So the budgeted expenses, the numbers for the lifeguards and rec director are up because of the 3% increase we have budgeted. Maintenance is down slightly, but that better reflects the actual expenditure from the year before. I'm skimming through quickly, and I think we're on the next page. Pretty much, things in the rec department are level funded. And we, so we have budgeted expenses of $158,321. And the net general budget is $128,321, for, as I said, a very slight decrease in the rec budget. We had a meeting. Things are moving forward. I think there was a mention in the school board portion of this presentation about walking paths and potentially getting the path from the school up Post Road, up Chisana Drive, and up to Northwood Park on a new shared-use path put into place. We had a meeting today. We are happy to announce, and we let the folks know this a couple of months ago. We have obtained the necessary easement now to make that connection from Chisana over to lands of the town. And we met today with the engineer who will be designing the link, a path that will connect the Chisana Drive up to Northwood. So it's pretty exciting. Keep an eye out for that. And I think that concludes what we have on recreation. Marsha, what would you like to ask?
I actually don't have a question for this budget. Thank you, though.
So the bottom line is, this is on the back page where we put everything together. If you tally up all of the requests, as are reflected in the town meeting article requests, and you add them all together, you will see a total town budget of $2,176,802. Anticipated income to be applied against that of $1,516,56950. So the amount needed to be raised by taxes will be $1,249,852 for an overall increase in the town side of the budget of 0.43%, which is, of course, less than half a percent. So we do hope you all take a chance, take a look at these budgets. Call any one of us for, with questions you may have. But please do vote on Town Meeting Day, and we do hope that you will vote to support your town in these budgets. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or comments for items on the municipal side of proceedings? Not seeing any. Of course, anyone on the phone, feel free to jump in here if you have a question or comment. Oh, Mary, you must have answered them all. I don't see any. Good job. All right, well, seeing none, I don't think I need a motion to adjourn us.
Matt, if I could remind the select board to stay on, we will resume our select board meeting so we can vote to approve the articles we've just gone over.
Very good. So last call. I don't see anything in the chat. I don't see any hands raised. I don't hear any voices. We're probably losing people. So I think that that concludes this portion of the evening. Thank you all for attending. We'll see some of you back here March 1st for the real pre-town meeting and voting on the 2nd. Thank you all for attending.